Good evening. This is Town of Eastline Board of Selectmen Public Hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Eastline Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, November 19th, 2025 at 5:00 PM at the Eastline Town Hall, 108 Pennsylvania Avenue, Niantic, Connecticut via Zoom for a presentation by the applicants and the public comment regarding the following. Docket number 545, ARX, is that the pronunciation? ARX Wireless Infrastructure LLC and New Singular Wireless PCS LLC application for a certificate of environmental compatibility and public need for the construction, maintenance, and operation of a telecommunications facility and associated equipment located at 306 Flanders Road, Eastline, Connecticut. A copy of the application and the information on file with the Connecticut Siting Council can be found at https://portal.ct.gov/cse/one. Applications and other pending matters, applications for docket numbers 500S, docket number 545, and at the office of the Eastline Town Clerk to which reference may be had. Interested persons are invited to attend and be heard. Hybrid Zoom details are attached, and the meeting ID is 892-5537-9077, passcode 06357. That was signed by me as the first selectman. So, before we begin, could we rise and resume the recording?
Congratulations to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, so we have presenters here tonight, and who would like to begin the presentation?
Good evening, selectmen and staff. My name is Julie Kohler. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I am the General Counsel of ARX Wireless. Unfortunately, I couldn't be there tonight, but you are in good hands with the rest of the ARX folks. Let me introduce our panel. There's Keith Coppins, who is the ARX Wireless CEO, Doug Roberts, who is responsible for the design of the proposed site, and David Archambault from VSS, who performed the visual analysis that is a component of the Siting Council application. As you are probably aware, AT&amp;T and Verizon have both indicated a need for a wireless site at this location. I'll let Kristin introduce her panel.
Hi. Good evening, selectmen. My name is Kristin Motel. I'm a partner at the law firm Cuddy &amp; Thader, counsel for AT&amp;T on this matter. Our panel consists of Harry Carey, Director of Expert Affairs from AT&amp;T, Martin Lavin, a Senior RF Engineer with C Squared Systems, who concedes to AT&amp;T's coverage clause and need, and Gregory Costello from SAI Group, who's a Senior Manager in Site Acquisition Professional, who can speak to the proposed facility itself and the equipment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ken, do you want to say anything, or would you like me to introduce Martin for Verizon's information?
I'll just say hello. Thanks, Julie. Good evening, everyone. My name's Ken Baldwin. I'm a lawyer at Robinson &amp; Cole in Hartford. I represent Verizon Wireless, and we have intervened in this Siting Council proceeding for the ARX tower. Martin Lavin is going to be stepping in if you have any RF questions regarding Verizon Wireless's need for service at this facility. Nice to see you all.
Thanks. Now that we've introduced the panel of experts who've made themselves available for this meeting, I'd like to provide some context for you. As you know, the Siting Council has exclusive jurisdiction over the proposed wireless application that is before them. We've gathered the experts here this evening in order to participate in this hearing/zoom call for the purpose of participating in a town informational meeting. We welcome your questions, and we'll provide what are answers in detail we can. We welcome any questions now. Doug, would you like to give the beginning presentation?
Surely. Can I sit up here?
Yes, or the podium, whatever is easiest for you. Either way.
I'll do the podium.
Okay.
If that's okay.
Of course.
Sure. Thank you. Again, my name's Doug Roberts. I'm an architect. I just was looking to, if we could bring up the site civil plans. Thank you. I just wanted to go over the project itself. The site's located at 306 Flanders Road in Eastline, and we're proposing 135-foot monopole. The site consists of a .73-acre parcel. There's a restaurant on the site itself right now. We'll be locating our proposed site in the back of the parking lot, right against the cemetery parcel. The proposed site is 2,000 square feet of compound area. We're leasing 3,600 square feet, and our underground utilities will be from Flanders Road underground to our compound itself. The tower itself is 135-foot-tall galvanized monopole. We have 131-foot center line for AT&amp;T, 120-foot for Verizon, and there's room for two additional carriers, as well as the Town of Eastline's emergency service if they deem it necessary to co-locate here. We're proposing for the ground area, a meter center and transformer from the power company. We've met with Eversource on site. Verizon is proposing two cabinets, a battery and a radio cabinet, as well as a diesel generator, and AT&amp;T is proposing one cabinet slash battery and radio cabinet with, again, a diesel generator. And there'll be room within that compound, not only for two additional carriers, but again, the Town of Eastline Emergency Services if it's deemed necessary for the site. We could go to, I guess, C1 would kind of be, would be up a little. That kind of depicts the location. Sorry, C1 would down one, please. Perfect. The relationship of the restaurant itself, which is up by the street, 20 feet off the street itself, and our compound's in the very rear of the parking lot, in an area that's, right now, a detention base, and we're going to reconfigure that once we get to that point. The next sheet would be helpful in that. Kind of shows, sorry, shows the relationship with the detention base in our compound, as well as the existing building, which is the restaurant. The next sheet would be good if you could go to it. And this is an elevation of the tower itself, showing the two future carriers, AT&amp;T and Verizon itself, as well as a layout of the compound with the equipment lease areas, as well as the two future carriers that could co-locate on that. And the rest of the sheets are submitted to the Siting Council, are pretty much standard details for, you know, how we plan to do the compound, fencing, and stuff related to construction. I can take questions, or I can hold to the very end, whatever the board wishes.
How about you have a little presentation?
Okay.
Yeah, if you want to continue to present, then we can say questions for the end.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, we do?
Thank you. I am the CEO of ARX Wireless, and I think that our proposal, or what Doug has stated, is the extent of our presentation. So if you guys have any questions, we're happy to answer anything that you have.
Great. Okay. So what makes it so attractive at this specific location? Because that is kind of on the main drag, and it's going to be located, pretty much, my understanding, the back parking lot of a restaurant.
So we're proposing the site based on the need from the carriers, and we can go to Martin Lavin, who is representing both Verizon and for AT&amp;T, who are less, are sub-SEs on the tower. They can talk about the need for the tower. So what makes this one good is it's on a commercial property, it's surrounded by other commercial properties. It doesn't, it's a, the visibility, the visual impact of it doesn't change anything of the area. So those are the things that we're looking for from a development point of view, but from a need point of view, I'm going to let Martin talk about that piece of it. So Martin, do you want to jump in here?
Sure. It's Martin Lavin, C Squared Systems, on behalf of AT&amp;T and Verizon. If we could get those plots up, for AT&amp;T at least. This first plot shows the location of current sites, which are the black stars. The purple star is the current site on the power company's tower, and the yellow star is the proposed replacement for that. We're being decommissioned from, after move our facility from the power company's facility. So this is a replacement, in this case, of AT&amp;T for an existing site, and the terrain is shown in the background.
Can I just interrupt? Why are we moving sites? Why is the other one being decommissioned?
So I can answer that question.
Okay.
Thank you. So Eversource is typically the, they're currently on Eversource properties. Verizon currently is not on an Eversource property, and the leases are coming due on Eversource, and Eversource is not extending any of the leases. So we have to move off the existing, off the existing sites, or AT&amp;T is having to move off the existing sites to a site that's not a property of Eversource.
Why isn't Eversource going to extend the lease?
I don't know the answer to why they're not, but it's, they're not doing it.
Okay. Thank you.
Does the location take anything away from that back parking lot where that business is?
So we, ARX had a meeting with the landowner today. It's going to take some, it's going to take some of their existing parking away, but we are going to extend some parking on a adjacent property owner, on the adjacent property to extend the parking to that. So they won't lose, actually, they'll gain parking based on what we're going to do.
To that?
I'm sorry?
Are they in agreement to that?
Yes. As of today, yes, they are in agreement. We're going to enter into an amendment to our lease agreement with our landowner to state that, what exactly we're going to do.
Okay. That's okay. Okay.
Don, you want to start? Some other questions answered. Okay.
Are there any wetlands near where you're proposing to put this place?
We did a wetlands delineation, and there are no wetlands that would be impacted by our facility.
Okay. And then you said you're going to have different, I don't know, machines or transformers or generators, whatever. Will they be fenced in, whatever you're going to be?
So the generators are from each of the carriers, and they're within their lease space within the compound. So if we have a 2,000-foot compound, 2,000-square-foot compound, the equipment is all going to be within that 2,000 square feet.
Is that inside?
Inside the compound, inside the fenced area.
Okay. All right. Got it. Thank you.
I think the only thing that's outside is a transformer from Eversource, but all the utilities are going to go underground to a backboard that will feed our tower site.
And then the other question I have is radiation exposure, because the concern is there is a daycare, I was trying to see how far away it is, but it's, I think it's like across the street, basically, and that was my concern. So I don't know if you could address that issue?
I'm going to let Julie Kohler talk to that point.
Okay. That'd be great. Thank you.
Sure. As part of the Siting Council application, there is a section of it that requires us to take a look at certain facilities, including daycares and schools and similar-type facilities, what the distance is, and it is well outside that distance. I can pull up the number for you, but I know that it's compliant with the Siting Council guidelines.
Yeah, if you could tell me what that distance is that they're saying is within the guidelines?
Sure. Can you identify the school for me, the daycare for me?
Carolot.
Okay, Carolot.
Okay.
Maybe David Archambault can pull that up, who did our facilities that did the daycares.
That'd be great. David?
Give me just a moment, and I will get that number for you. I have to pull up the report myself, so give me a minute, and I'll get back to you if you want to keep going. I will chime back in.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Dan, I do have a question, if that's okay?
What is your timeline, as far as construction and getting this through? I mean, we found out about this in the public notice Saturday.
So we filed, we filed a technical report. Goodness. Julie, do you have a date that we filed the technical report?
Sure. And maybe I can give a little context to that, too.
Okay.
As part of the Siting Council process, we have to file a technical report with the town and several of the town agencies that are elucidated in the statute. On June 23rd of this year, we filed the technical report with the First Selectmen's Office, Planning, Wetlands, and a variety of other agencies. In that letter, which was submitted by our local council, we provided the technical report, which provides all the information about the site search, environmental, visual, and the need for the site. We asked to have a meeting and explain that you have, this town would have 30 days from the date of the initial meeting to offer us alternatives, and that we would be able to file our certificate, which is the larger application, to the Siting Council at the 60-day mark. We didn't hear anything from the town. We followed up on July 3rd of this year and sent another letter to the town and the associated agencies, providing a couple additional details about AT&amp;T and their need for the site, and requested again that we meet with someone from the town, and didn't receive any feedback at all. So despite these communications from the applicant, at this point, we're moving forward, and the hearing now is on January 29th.
The hearing?
I hope that's helpful.
The hearing with the Siting Council?
Correct.
Correct. And I guess my next question would be, did you hear back from, either you said you filed the technical report with planning, wetlands, and zoning? Did you hear back from any of those groups?
We did not hear back from anybody representing the Town of Eastline. I believe, and Keith, correct me if I'm wrong, the first reach out that we had from the Town of Eastline was from your attorney, I believe it was November 12th, in which time they asked the Siting Council to extend the time for the town consultation period, and were then denied because there's no statutory ability to extend the time, was the Siting Council's reasoning.
That's correct.
May I ask why there was no communication from the town?
We did receive the, and?
You're talking about this?
Yeah, the one that was checked up. Roseanne, we've got it.
This is just a copy that I made of it.
Yeah. And I did, Roseanne did.
No, I'm asking that they had reached out back in June, July?
Right.
Right. So I'm asking, why has there been no communication from Eastline to them?
I hadn't heard from any of the other agencies that received it. It was available to the Board of Selectmen. I hadn't heard back from any of the members, so we didn't offer any further communication at that time.
This is not the first time I've heard this presentation. I believe it was presented to Sony Commission. Mr. Mulholland gets here this evening. If he would be interested in commenting, or if that's not appropriate, then we can move on.
No. We can, however you want to proceed. No? Any other questions, but if you want to reverse?
Just briefly, Bill Mulholland, zoning official. We did not, as I recall, have a hearing on this subject matter at the Sony Commission level.
Okay, it must have been.
At this time. It may have been another issue. I don't recall a cell tower hearing. As you know, we meet twice a month, and we have a pretty rigid agenda.
Then, at some point, I did hear a presentation on this, so.
Okay, thank you.
I apologize. I thought it was at Sony.
So yeah, we did receive the packet. It was in my office. We did have, we did let the board know that we had it, and several reviewed it, and I did not hear any comments from anyone, so.
So this is the one that I asked for a copy for, and was told that I couldn't get a copy? Is that what that is?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
Could I ask a question?
Yeah, of course.
Technical question. I'm looking at this topographical map here, and I noticed that the other black cell towers tend to be on elevations higher than 250 feet, per se. I can't see exactly. And that this proposed cell tower is at an elevation of 40 feet, and if this tower is 135 feet high, that gives it a maximum elevation of 175 feet, which is still well below other sites around that are above that. I don't know much about wireless infrastructure, but it would make sense to me that those two areas to the east and west of the site, which rise, I think I'm reading 250 high, why were those not considered for this site?
I'm not sure which properties you're looking at. They may have been.
The red.
Again, you're saying red, but I don't know who owns the property. We may have contacted those property owners, and they may not have been interested. It may not have been available to us. We're not necessarily looking for the highest height. We're looking for what the carriers are looking for to do their coverage, and I can let Martin Lavin expand on that, on that piece of it. But again, we're looking for a site that meets the coverage objectives that are, that the carriers would meet.
I would like to know more, if you wouldn't mind having someone explain it.
Again, I'm not sure what the property names are. We have a list of all the properties that we looked at.
So the site was selected not necessarily because it was the best site for coverage. It was the community owner, or the business owner who would be able to partner with you?
Doug, I can talk to this, if you like.
Sure.
So that, I think what you're referencing, sir, is, just a moment, CT 1345, CT, I think it's 5220, CT 5217, et cetera. Am I right in that?
Those numbers are kind of meaningless to me, I'm afraid.
Are those the numbers that you're referencing, though, as far as the black stars?
Go back to the map, right there.
Yeah. So these are existing sites. They already, they're already established and propagated.
Yes. The question I'm asking is, why weren't the two red blotches, which I'll point to in a moment, considered when the elevation is over considerably higher than the blue, which is at 40 feet?
He's saying that those have been better or more chosen properties, and why weren't they?
Yeah. I'll have to tap Martin for that, as far as how the topography works with the propagation.
That sounds good.
In this particular instance, our current coverage is established from the decom site, which is CT 5218. This particular site doesn't really, and the plots will show how it fills in the gap. Its proximity to 95 is one of the factors that brings it down so close. We don't, I'm guessing those are our legacy sites back from when we would go to mountaintops and try to cover as much as possible. Now, with high-speed data, we can't really have sites overrunning and showing up miles away on elevated terrain. In this particular case, this site's very well suited to the area it's in right now. Really didn't have any difficulties with it that I'm aware of, and the replacement site is very close and replicates the service that our customers are having at the moment and enhances it somewhat. I don't know, those to move hundreds of feet higher would probably end up causing more overlapping coverage with the current sites that you see around it, rather than filling in that very busy area where 161 Chesterfield Road crosses over 95 and Boston Post Road.
Let me clarify something for you, too. You had mentioned that, you know, whether you enter into a lease with the landowner that's willing to enter into a lease. The statutory mandate is that the site has to be environmentally, technically, legally feasible. So we have to consider it from a variety of different standpoints. It has to be constructible. We have to be able to lease the property. It has to be financially feasible. It has to be feasible from an RF standpoint. It has to be feasible from an environmental standpoint. So there's a lot of different components and pieces to this puzzle. From an RF standpoint, I don't know if you want Martin to continue on to the next slide, showing the coverage that's going to be provided from the new site. Martin, could you just walk us through this?
That particular slide shows our distances to the neighbor sites for AT&amp;T, the closest of which is, I believe, 2 miles away. CT 5217, it just shows the network for AT&amp;T of the surrounding sites. The next slide shows the coverage that we have now with the site that's going to be Green is what we call our optimal coverage. Orange is a lower level that's considered adequate, and white is considered, at the current time, not to have reliable coverage. The next slide shows what The next slide shows what we have left once the decommissioned site is taken away, and this whole area opens up rather drastically. We're losing quite a lot of coverage, I think in the order of about two square miles of coverage, 1,200 in population. The next slide will show how the new site fills in, and in population area and roadway coverage, it is somewhat better than the site we have now. So this really fills in the busiest area here. To go any higher moves us away from busy area in terms of capacity, the place to be for a new site is right where the customers are. In this particular case, the greatest concentration would be Lawn 95 and 161, Boston Post Road, and that whole very busy commercial area.
Okay, thank you.
Roseanne?
Yes, so in terms of appearance, what would the average person driving by, what would they see? Would they see this at all?
I'm gonna direct that question to David Arshambaugh, our visual assessment person.
I'm sorry, I could hardly hear the question.
I was inquiring as to, as a person drove through town or down Boston Post Road, what would they see?
We can get into that if you want to bring up the view set and the photo sims, and we can give you a very good idea of what'll be seen from certain places. But before we go any further with that, just so you know, the Camelot Children's Center there across the street by the Care Lot Children's Center is 798 feet from the proposed site to the building.
And what is the standard?
I believe we're supposed to keep everything, or they're supposed to keep everything for the citing council more than 200 feet, I think is the number, that they want to make sure things are more than 200 feet away, but it doesn't, I don't believe it precludes them inside that, they just have to give notice.
So the standard's 200 feet, okay. In terms of appearance, we're all familiar with the other cell tower that already exists in town. Would the appearance of this tower be the same?
So we're looking, we're proposing a regular monopole, which is a single-stick pole with antennas at the top, and then what we call platforms, and the antennas go at the top, and then 10 feet, 12 feet below is another set of antennas, and then 10 feet below that is another set of antennas. But it's not a, it's not a guide tower where there's wires, it's not a lattice tower where it looks like an erector set, it's a solid steel pole.
Thank you.
I think you had that image on earlier in the presentation, when you're describing the monopole.
Correct.
Now, how much traffic would be coming in and out of that site?
So once construction is completed, the carrier and the carriers are online. We anticipate maybe once a month that the carriers come out to do routine maintenance, and they're in a regular-traveled car, like a SUV, not a truck, or not a semi or anything like that. If there's another carrier that comes on for construction, they'll bring a crane to put the antennas on, but routine maintenance is just regular traffic during regular business hours. And we talked about regular business hours with the landowner today. For construction would be during 7:00 AM and 3:00 PM.
Would they gain, so I was gonna ask you about the maintenance, but when they do go in and out, are they gonna be accessing through that parking lot, through that restaurant?
They would.
They will?
Yes.
Now, we know that it transmits signals, but is there any vibration associated with this?
To find out, there's no vibration.
Okay, so no ground disturbance once this is built?
No.
Because as you've informed us, and as we know, there is a historic cemetery near that site with many fragile stones, things, and then there's, aside from the cemetery, there are a couple of other historic buildings that have old foundations on them, underneath them, and so I think there might be some concern about the actual construction, and how much drilling has to be done into the ground, and how much vibration that would create.
So our, there's no blasting being considered here, it's just digging for our foundation, similar to what was done at Costco, which is adjacent to the cemetery that you're speaking of. Our foundation obviously is considerably less than what Costco did, so we don't anticipate any vibrations of what you're talking about to disturb anything at the cemetery.
Thank you very much. I'm all set.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have a few. I'm curious about the purpose of the diesel generator and how often it would be used. Specifically, I'm looking for exhaust issues.
Okay.
I realize there's a lot of space between that and a childcare facility, but if this is gonna be running continuously, I'm just wondering about air quality.
Sure. The generators are there for emergency purposes only. The, if there's a power outage for a certain period of time, they also have backup battery generation as well, but during emergency services, during emergency times, the generator will come on and service, if there's a power outage, and they'll service that area, the tenant, whether it be Verizon or AT&amp;T, they'll service that tenant and allow them to continue with uninterrupted service during that outage. We don't anticipate them being on for a long period of time, but if there's a hurricane or whatever during, we've all had them here, and we've had weeks of outages, but everybody's out at that point. So you're concerned about the school, they're probably not there, but at the end of the day, we're looking at, it's during emergency times. The other piece of it is, usually once a month, they turn on for a short period of time to just keep everything running, make sure that everything's going well. It's automatic, and they're serviced monthly, from monthly or semi-monthly, from a service contractor.
Thank you. I have another question about the catch basin. I'm afraid I don't quite understand what the purpose of that would be in this site. Is it to service the runoff from the parking lot, and it's going to be reconfigured now that there's going to be a structure on that site?
So what I'm understanding, what I'm understanding, what happened in the past is that our landowner, or the tenant of our landowner, put in a catch basin to have runoff of water to, because the road, Flanders Road was lower than it is now. Currently, it's, they don't have any issues, so we are gonna do a study on where the water is and what's going on with it, but if there is a need for water runoff, we'll do catch basins and whatnot, and flow the water where it needs to go. We'll definitely, obviously, we'll do that as part of our DNM plan, Development and Management Plan to the citing council, and, but there won't be any standing water within our compound, or within any area around our compound on the property. We want proper, we'll have proper drainage to the site.
Okay, thank you. Also, you'll have to indulge me here, I'm afraid I don't understand the scale or scope of these things, but when there was construction at Costco, there was a great deal of apprehension about aquifer beneath that site, and how much drinking water it supplied to the town. This current proposal, how far down does that dig? Does that run the risk of interfering with any aquifer, or is there a potential for, you know, fuel tanks that are buried underground at the Costco site to perhaps be influenced by these through, if not vibration, some other construction side project or...
So, I'm...
Side effect.
So we haven't done, we haven't done a geotech, our geotechnical report on the site yet. We will, as part of our project, to find out where the water line is, and Doug, assuming that everything is normal with what Costco did, I'm not saying it's normal, but our typical foundations don't typically go more than eight feet?
No, five.
Five feet deep?
Five feet, oh wow, okay.
But it's a spread footer, and then it's a pier within that footer that the tower will sit on.
I'm sorry, I don't understand what those terms mean.
Yeah, I didn't either at one point.
Sounds cool, though.
So it's a pad and pier, it's a pad and pier design, it's not, we don't drill deep to the, what a caisson would necessarily do, where you dig deep and the foundation goes really, really deep, but it's small. It goes wide.
And shallow.
And then, on top of that, or within the foundation, is the pier that the tower sits on.
Okay, I understand that.
I hope I got that right, Doug.
Very good.
Those are all my questions.
Anyone else?
Yeah, so you were saying that the site had to be environmentally, technically, and legally feasible, so is it your contention that 306 Flanders Road does fulfill that?
It absolutely does.
Okay. And if you're decommissioning the property at 269 Flanders Road, will you also, like, take that down, so it's not an eyesore any longer?
So I just want to be clear about what we're doing and what AT&amp;T is doing. We're proposing a new tower.
Correct.
AT&amp;T is on an existing ever-source structure that is servicing electric service to the area. That tower doesn't come down.
Okay, okay.
They just come off of it.
Understood, okay.
And Greg, if I could just ask, Greg, if you want to comment on the process for removing the equipment on the existing facility, and what that looks like?
To say the least, it's a long process. You're looking at about three years before that stuff actually gets removed. They have to turn the power down to be able to access it on the stanchion, and they don't just do that for one small section, they do it for a whole breadth of area, they have a shutdown, a power shutdown. So that takes a lot of time and coordination. That is, it's another reason why AT&amp;T wants to be off of that, because accessing it to modify and update equipment, it takes a very long time.
They being coordinating with ever-source.
Right.
Any other?
I do, I have just a question. So you're saying that it's meeting criteria to move forward to good spots, great, but then you just also said that the geotech report hadn't been done, so you couldn't answer the question about the aquifer, right? So how does that work going forward with the council? It doesn't make sense to me, so please help me.
Understood. So sometimes when we're in the citing council process, we move sites. Sometimes we move them different places, so we don't do a geotech on that, a geotechnical report, which tells us how deep the water is, and what kind, what rocks are there, whatnot. Again, am I saying this right? But typically, we know, we know the area, what's happening, but...
You mean because other things are there, because everything else is...
Everything else that is existing, we look at it, and, but at the, but when we get, once we get an approval of a site, the very first thing we do is do a geotech so that we can understand what kind of foundation we're gonna build. If it's near, if it's, if it's near a building, if it's near water, if it's, do I build a caisson, which goes really, really deep, and it's cylindrical? Or are we gonna do a pad and pier, which I explained earlier to you, Jason, about what it looked like? That's kind of what our foundation looks like. That's how, that's why we do it later. We don't do it now, because if they move us, then I have to do another one.
Any other questions? I have some, if there's one other. So my understanding, you know, with the pad and the foundation around it, you want to wait until you have approvals before you put the expense of the geological study under, is that right?
That's correct.
Because that's a lot more expensive, and if you get moved somewhere else, you want to be paying...
I don't want to do it twice. I don't want to do it three times.
When they do that, are they just looking at the, I understand they're looking at the structure, are they also looking at the chemistry of the land? Are they looking for toxins, or are they just looking for geography?
We've already done all the phase one, phase two, if needed. We've already done all of that prior to, the geotech doesn't have anything to do with the environmental. It only has to do with the foundation.
So you have, you have a baseline, phase one, phase two?
Absolutely.
So if later on, five or 10 years from now, something is detected, you would be able to say, look, this was how we found it, and this is where we are now. So you've done a baseline, phase one, phase two?
That's absolutely correct.
Okay. The other question is, you did mention RF, radio frequency, and my understanding of those types of towers, you have receivers and transmitters, is that right?
I'm gonna let Martin answer those questions.
That's correct.
And so, as far as concern over receiver, we're all experiencing the same amount of RF radiation just sitting here that you would at that tower on the receiver end, correct? You just, you concentrate that received signal with a parabolic reflector, and you focus it on a receiver, and that's how you get the signal, is that right?
Yeah, there are no emissions on the receiving side now.
Right, because that's everywhere. We're all exposed to that type of electromagnetic microwave radiation, so that's not the concern. The concern is on the transmit side, where you're receiving that signal, you're processing it, and now you're beaming it back out to another tower, is that right?
It's just the, we call the downlink, from the tower to the subscriber.
Right, and so that's more, that's more like a beam, correct? You've got that signal, and you're sending it line of sight to another tower, is that correct?
From the tower, it goes to the user, not to another tower.
It actually goes to, so if I'm running around town with my cellphone, I'm getting that signal?
From the tower, yes.
So it's, it's, we might describe it as a spherical signal, it's not being beamed directed at some other tower, it's being emitted out so that everybody can receive it 360 degrees in any direction, is that right?
In our case, we use directional antennas for efficiency. Each antenna covers about 120 degrees worth, so it sends the signal out in the direction where the user is who's receiving it.
Okay, so you have areas that are determined to be low need for a particular signal, or maybe have other coverage, so you're directing that 120-degree angled beam... So you're directing that 120-degree angled beam in the direction that helps solve your coverage gap issues, is that right?
Yes, they're generally 120 issues, 120 degrees apart, but we may adjust them slightly to hit specifically busy areas.
And if, it's been a long time since I did calculus, geometry, but signal, as the signal leaves, does it diminish exponentially as it leaves the site?
Um, it drops according, in our calculations, we do the worst case in terms of how much power density reaches someone. As this, it drops as the square of the distance.
So it's an exponential.
For, for our calculation purposes. And in, in fact, it drops a lot more rapidly than that, but we do the worst possible case of dropping as the square of the distance.
So those figures that you had mentioned earlier, 200 feet would be the, the, you wouldn't want to be closer than 200 feet. Let's say you had a daycare center, you want to be further away than 200 feet. And in this case, we, we have 700 some odd feet away from the care lot center.
790 feet.
What was it?
Our, our beam, it's, it's a bit like a, a lighthouse, inasmuch as it's going out to the users generally speaking over the heads of people very close. But our report shows that in the absolute worst case of ideal emission, ideal, the lower losses, the perfect ground reflection, all the radios being on full power at the same time, which just doesn't really happen. We're looking at 6.5 percent, 6.57 percent of the FCC limit as an absolute worst case. And if you were to go out and measure it, you'd probably measure something more like 1.5 percent of the limit.
Okay. So you have a pretty good engineering factor built in that it's, it's a safe distance away from the, from the source of the signal.
Yes.
And then, part of this whole process is to remove transmitters off of the ever-source powered tower.
Yes.
And so, that ambient RF radiation is going to be reduced at the time you switch it on over at the new site, is that correct?
Yes. Uh, yeah, they, they won't operate at the same time. This facility will be built up and fully operational. And then in the middle of the night, it will be turned on, connected to the network, and the other site will be turned off.
So you're, you're going to have an increase in radiation from one source, but a decrease that is still proximate to the daycare center that we're concerned about fairly simultaneously?
Uh, yes, I think the current tower is about 150 feet further away from the daycare center, but it's, you know, it's, you're turning one on and turning one off that are just about the same.
Yeah, okay. Then turning to the actual visual look of it. So as we had talked about a moment ago, it is what they described as a mono, a monopole tower. And that is a, just a cylinder, correct? It looks almost like the type of pole you'd have for a street light on the highway. An aluminum spun pole that goes up. Is that sort of the look of it?
It's a, it's a steel pole.
It's a steel pole.
Cylindrical, correct.
Yeah. And so, I mean, I think many of us are familiar with the cellphone towers that are, that look like, you know, the erector set you got when you were a kid, and you put it all together, and it had a lot of triangles and angles in it. This isn't that style of, of tower.
That's correct.
Okay. And then, you know, getting back to the questions about the backup generator power. So each carrier will have their own backup generator, is that the idea? So whether it's AT&amp;T or one other, another wireless carrier, they want to make sure they have their own hardware to keep their signal on in the event of a storm or a loss of the grid power.
Correct.
And then there is battery backup associated with that. So battery backup would take over as soon as the grid power stops. And at some point, if need be, the generator would come on to replenish that battery.
I'm not sure which one comes first, but they have redundancy. Redundancy.
That's, that's, that's the redundancy. So you have triple, well, okay, so double redundancy, you have grid power, you have a battery, and you have a generator.
That's correct.
But the generator is just intermittent, once a month, and maybe they turn it on for a little bit to make sure it runs.
For maintenance, maintenance purposes, yes.
Okay. And do we know, are those propane-powered, or are they diesel?
These are diesel-powered.
They are diesel. So you will have a, some sort of a diesel tank to power those generators onsite?
That's correct.
Okay. Yeah, that's it for me.
So I just, I wasn't sure what our purpose here tonight. I know we've listened to them, we're supposed to.
We'll have an opportunity to submit comments to the, to the siting commission in January, is that correct? Okay, so that's, when is the date for that?
So, I suggest since this is a public hearing, you hear from the applicant, then the public be allowed to comment. And then, once the public hearing is closed, later on during your regular meeting, the selectmen will have a chance to discuss it among yourselves publicly. And then I have prepared a resolution that there are basically four actions the selectmen can take. You don't have that in front of you, but I will get it to you between, at the, when this portion of the public hearing is over.
During a regular meeting.
Yes. Okay, you're welcome.
All right, so if the presentation from Arc Wireless Infrastructure at all is concluded, then it is now time to solicit public comment?
Well, before we do that, wasn't there a mention of seeing information about how this is going to look? The visual aesthetics?
Yeah.
If you don't mind, we have Verizon here as well, they also need the site. And you got, you saw all of AT&amp;T's plots and discussed their need, but you haven't heard yet from Verizon, so I just wanted to offer you that opportunity.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, we'd like to hear from you.
Which would you like to do first?
I feel like every time the visibility thing comes up, it's pushed aside, so perhaps since it's on the panel, on the board right now, we just go with that.
That sounds fine. Yeah, let's, let's, let's find out what it looks like, that would be good.
It's all you, David.
All right. So you have control over what's up. This is just a cover page of the site. The first few pages here are an introduction telling us about what we're doing, about the site. You can read through that. It gives a description of the surrounding area for the siting council to get a, an idea of what's around there. If you want to scroll through this, the mythology of how we.
Can you pause, I'm sorry. Can you go back up? Stop there, please. 600 feet to the northeast is a site of the closest licensed daycare facility. That is considerably smaller than the 798 that we were told.
That might be to the edge of the property as opposed to the building?
If I may, if I may state also, the existing site that AT&amp;T is currently on is much closer than our proposed to the, to the daycare facility.
I'm sorry. A difference of 200 feet when it's 600 feet away just seems like a large margin of error.
When the report was written, it, it was probably written to the edge of the property. And the, the properties here were set quite a distance back from the edge of the property, from the front edge of the property. And same with the daycare, it's set in the back part of the property, the building is, as opposed to the front. I can certainly clarify that and, and get back with you guys. I won't be able to do that today, but, or tonight, but I can certainly confirm that with you.
Okay. I just have to comment and say that doesn't do much to inspire confidence in the rest of this. But I guess we'll have to proceed.
It's, okay.
Hey, you want to go ahead?
You can continue reading if you'd like, the, how we do the study, the forms that we use to do the viewshed map, which is, as you scroll through this, you'll get to the maps that show different colors of where the site is visible with leaf on and leaf off. And this explains a little bit about the balloon test itself, how we fly the balloon, how we take the pictures, what the camera settings are set at to show as close to the human eye as possible. So, this is written out where all the pictures are taken, which you'll see them numbered on the maps and their distances to the site, whether it's visible, not visible, year-round, or obscured, so you probably wouldn't see it during the summer. The balloon test was done in December, so there were no leaves on the trees. Again, showing the, the most visible it's going to, going to be. All the locations are rough locations of, of where the picture was taken from.
May I make a suggestion to the applicant, Mr. First Selectman? There are very good photographs, which, okay, in Exhibit B. And, and they, the balloon tests and both the simulation, I think would be very helpful to the public and to this board.
Right, that, that is part of this report as we're getting through it. We're going to come to first the visual maps, the viewshed maps which you're seeing now. And then, right after that, are the photo sims. So if you want to.
Yeah, excuse me, David, if you could maybe just go to the viewshed and then go to the photos, which seem to be.
So, the, the viewsheds are, you're scrolling through the viewshed maps right now. So if you wanted to back up a couple of maps, keep going. Uh, one, that map right there is, is probably good. So, this, this, this map is showing the visibility with the leaf off the trees. So we use LiDAR data, and we can compute and tell you where it's going to be visible. All the circles with numbers are where we took photos, which we'll see in the photo sim package here in just a minute. But where you see the darker reds, that you're seeing more of the tower, if you see the scale to the right, where the colors are hitting the towers. Most of the visibility is right around where the site is. In some open lots and open fields, there is certainly a bunch of visibility. As you get just a little bit away from the site, it starts to be blocked from somebody standing five feet off the ground, like the little guy in the legend there. That's what we're basing this on. Five feet off the ground, anywhere outside, looking at the tower. Wherever you see a yellow or an orange, that's where you will see the tower. You're going to be seeing it blocked by buildings, looking through trees, depending on where the color is. This is an overall picture of its visibility. Where there's no color, you're just not going to see the tower at all. So the yellow line is a one-mile circle, one mile from the site. So we go out pretty far, and you can see in the blue box that there's 102 acres altogether out of a one-mile, actually a, a one-mile radius circle, which is two miles diameter. Only 102 acres have any visibility at all. And the majority of that is right along the road where the site is, and those open fields that are right next to the site. That's where the majority of the, the visibility is.
David, David, I think, I think what the, I think what the council wants to see is the photos.
Which are, which are that?
Yeah, why don't we get to that?
If you scroll up, I think, three pages, one, two, one more. So that's the cover sheet, that's the photo log right there. That's stop, that's photo one. So that is taken from directly across the street, looking at the site. You can see the balloon. When we originally did this site, the client was planning on doing a 150-foot tower. So the balloon is flown at 150 foot. It was a very nice day, almost no wind, and the balloon was sitting nearly vertical for the entire test. And you'll see, if you go one picture up, that's a monopole at 135 feet in the same location. Again, looking right across the street. That's going to be the most visible, you're going to see the, the tower. And then, we list a total of 20-something photos, I think 23 photos. And most of, of all of the visible ones are fairly close to the site. And if you go back two pages, you can see the photo locations right there. And they're numbered as close to the site. So the closest to the site is photo one, the furthest from the site is photo 23 at the bottom. So as we go through the photos, we're not necessarily going left or right, we're going distance from the site. The green dots mean you're going to see the tower or a portion of the tower all year long. And the yellow dots mean that you can see the tower, but it's being obstructed and looking through trees, things like that. So more than likely, the yellow dots during the summer months, you would not see the tower at all. And the red dots are, the site is not visible, even with the leaves off the trees, it's just not visible. So now if you want to scroll up. We looked at photo one, we can go to photo two.
Hold on, David. I'm sorry.
Can we please just move through and look at the photos?
Yep, that's, so photo one, we talked about. The next photo right there, that's photo two. And if you saw where that was on the map, looking back again, that's at 150 feet is where the balloon is. The next page is the simulation.
David, can you, can you just say where those photos are taken from, the address, so that they can have some kind of a location piece of it?
Yep, let me scroll back to this page. So photo two was from 132 Boston Post Road. It's about .16 miles from the site. That's this photo right here.
Next photo?
Next photo?
Location?
Each photo has its location right there, so that one's on Flanders Road. If you look at the bottom of the picture, it has the information for each one. So that one, we have as Flanders Road, and the latitude and longitude of where it was taken, and .22 miles away. And right above the backside of that caravan, if you look closely in the trees, again, that's why the site is yellow, it's because you're look, going to look through the trees, right through there, yes.
I, I think, David, we could probably move this through, just if you just give us the address, and then show the picture, and then the address, and then the picture.
Again, I'm not controlling the picture.
Oh, true, but you could just indicate when, when they should move the picture, how's that?
Okay. So this one was on Chesterfield Road. And.
Next photo?
This one was also from Chesterfield Road.
Yeah, that's a high school.
Yeah, that's a high school.
This one was from Flanders Road. That one was also from Flanders Road. That one, Thistle, Thistle Down Lane.
I see 135 and 150 being interchangeable in these diagrams. Is that because the proposed site was 150, but the actual current model is 135?
When we started the process, we did a tower at 155. AT&amp;T came back and said, we only need 135. So, once we had the height, we flew the balloon, we have a dynamic that we can, that we can look at. We can process that to 135. That's why you see the balloon at 150, 155, and you see the photos at the actual height of the tower.
Correct. These, this balloon test was done December of last year, so a year ago, at the start of the process.
And I believe you have all these photos in your package from the application.
That is, that is in the application.
Are these photo sets going to be available to the public in general?
They're, they're available now to the public in general.
Where are they available?
They're available here at the Town Hall and they're also available at the Connecticut Siting Council.
What was the second part?
The Connecticut Siting Council.
The link is attached to the notice of the public hearing. I attached that link and you can, if you click on that link, you'll be able to see everything filed with the Siting Council, including the application and the photographs.
Got it, thank you.
The photographs?
It is on the town's website.
The Viewshed, the photographs, and our whole report is one, one report. So, when you see the writing, that's the start of the report. You have to scroll through, then you'll see the maps, then you'll see the photo sims. So, if you're looking for them, you go through the same thing we just did here.
And Ms. Carlson, the notice of the public hearing is on the town's website, so it's easy to get to. If you go to the town's website, click on the link and then if you look up the application, it's there. There's also plenty of these floating around Town Hall.
Thank you.
Would you, would you like to hear from Verizon at this point?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, that'd be good, thank you.
Martin?
Good evening, folks, again, this is Ken Baldwin with Robertson &amp; Cole. I'll tag-team this with Martin, but we can be brief. Included in the application materials are coverage plots that Verizon has provided, similar to the plots that Martin went through for AT&amp;T. The one difference is Verizon doesn't currently maintain a facility on any of the electric transmission lines like AT&amp;T does in this area. So, any coverage that Verizon will be achieving from the tower at the proposed location would be new coverage that it would experience in the area. And primarily, if you look at the existing coverage plot that was provided at Verizon's 700 megahertz frequencies, their base frequencies, there are some significant coverage gaps all along I-95 from the tower location east, almost to and beyond the Waterford Town Line. And this, this facility would fill in that gap very nicely and provide that important service along the heavily traveled I-95. It also provides additional coverage to the north on Route 161 and to the south. Verizon is essentially on all of the same tower locations that AT&amp;T is on around the area. If you look at those plots, Verizon uses site names rather than numbers, just to keep it all confusing for everybody. But they are essentially the same location, same surrounding locations that AT&amp;T is on. That is often the case where the carriers, as you'd expect, would share existing tower sites whenever possible. And Verizon would be installing its antennas below AT&amp;T's at the proposed location. I would like to take the opportunity, Julie, if you don't mind, the references related to RF emissions and the Siting Council distance to daycare facilities. First of all, the statutory reference is 1650PA2F and it's a distance of 250 feet. But that distance is not related in any way to RF emissions or concerns for health effects related to RF emissions from daycare facilities. It simply has to do with aesthetics. The federal government has exclusive jurisdiction over radio frequency emissions and has established a standard. The only thing that the carriers need to do in Connecticut and anywhere else in the country is demonstrate that they will comply with that federal standard, which both AT&amp;T and Verizon will do in this case as it relates to this facility. And for both facilities, and Martin can speak to this, it's a cumulative effect, right? It's emissions from both AT&amp;T and Verizon together have to meet that standard and we will or we can't operate the facility. But I just, I just wanted to point out that distinction on the, on the emissions levels. And again, it relates specifically to aesthetic concerns. And the statutory reference talks about the building containing the daycare facility. So, to David's point earlier, it doesn't go to the property line, but it actually goes to the building containing that daycare facility. Thank you.
If there was an additional load applied to that tower, say, like town materials that you spoke of earlier, would that be factored into the Verizon, AT&amp;T transmission effluent? I'm making up words here, okay?
Yes.
Anytime, anytime equipment is added to the tower, there are MPE calculations done and submitted to the council.
To the Siting Council?
Siting Council.
Thanks.
It made me think of a question. So, as you add transmitting sources, it's additive, right? It adds more strength to that signal? Am I correct on that? Or is it, or it doesn't change the signal strength?
I'll let Martin talk about that one.
In terms of RF exposure, of the, anyone else who went on the tower, it would be over and above what is in our report. So, it is cumulative. Everyone who comes in has to comply with the limits and include the existing carriers on the tower in their analysis.
So, it is cumulative? I guess that was the word I was searching for. And so, as you add carriers to the tower, that increases that cumulative sum of signal strength. And you have to consider other carriers around the tower if you're gonna add somebody. So, you have to do that, you have to do the math, you have to do the analysis on the carriers?
For everyone who's on the tower, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Martin, do you just want to review what Verizon needs or was Ken's?
The report that's, I don't really need to add much. The report that is on file with the Siting Council includes all of AT&amp;T and Verizon Wireless's installation.
Do you have any questions or we can answer at this point?
Do we have any further questions?
I have one. I don't know how important it is to this matter right now, but there's layers, four zones on this monopole. I believe you said AT&amp;T is the top, Verizon would be the second. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Is there any advantage to one being higher than another?
I think that the carriers and part of our job and part of our, our, our application to the Siting Council is we need to provide co-location. So, we, it just so happens that AT&amp;T was on top this time. It meets the needs for Verizon. And when T-Mobile comes along, if they come along, which obviously we, we think they are, they would tell us, they would probably locate below the Verizon antennas. So, to answer your question, is there an advantage or disadvantage? I don't think so. I think it meets the needs for Verizon. It meets the needs for AT&amp;T here.
So scientifically, there may be some advantage, but the folks have calculated these specs and said, yes, this will be adequate for what we need?
That's, that's correct.
Which is also why sites that were 250 feet were not considered, because though they would scientifically be better, they're not necessarily, they're above and beyond what would be considered adequate for these vendors.
I'm not sure I can answer that question. 250 feet is, I mean...
The sites that were elevated to 250 feet, I'm...
We may not have evaluated those sites for that particular purpose. We had, we had a site that was lower and that met the needs of AT&amp;T and Verizon. So, do we need to increase the height to get to 250 feet? Or maybe that site wasn't available to us? We have an extensive site search summary of areas that we looked at and they weren't, they weren't selected for certain reasons. And whether it be a, you know, owner not interested or it didn't work for the, from an RF perspective. So, unless I have a specific site that I can, that I can look to, not just 250 feet, I can't really answer that question. I can answer the question of our site that we have here and the sites that we've evaluated and say, this site is a great site because it meets the objectives for AT&amp;T and Verizon that we know of today.
I suppose I'm looking, I'm thinking more big picture, like these are very tall structures. The idea is to get them up very high. But throughout this presentation, my understanding has been kind of pushed against that it doesn't need to be super high, it just needs to be high enough.
Our responsibility, though, is to, if we're gonna build a facility, to build it with the least amount of environmental impact.
Okay.
I don't know. So, my sense of it is that higher isn't always better. There's an optimal height, almost like a, I don't know anything about tennis, but a tennis racket, I hear there's a sweet spot. It is the ideal spot to hit the tennis ball. And I have a sense that with these towers, there's a sweet spot and it considers all three dimensions, the height, its location, X, Y, on the map. So, higher isn't necessarily better. There's an optimal place and this apparently meets most of their objectives or enough of them that it's an attractive spot.
The site meets the objectives of the carriers, for sure.
I understood the tennis racket thing, thank you.
Yeah, well, I figured you would, I know. All right, so, any other, any other questions? Are there any other parts of the presentation? Now we can, can we open it up to the public? Yes, please come to the podium and just state your name for the record and your address, please.
I'm Betsy Getch, I live at 18 Hillwood Drive. I'd like to know the distance from the building, the restaurant, to the fence.
Can someone answer that for her?
I'd like to know the height of the fence. I'd like to know the length of the contract with, you talk about the tenant. Is it the landowner or the tenant who has a contract for the tower? Who will remove the tower when it is no longer usable? And should the town decide that they need to use the tower, will you charge the town for the use of the tower? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hopefully, I'll be able to answer all these. From the street to the fence is approximately 300, 300 foot. And the fence itself is eight foot 12, as being proposed right now. It's a chain link type fence. We have discussed using anti-climb chain link fence, which is a smaller grid. And that's what we're proposing. So, the lease is actually with the owner of the property. We've had conversations with the tenant of the property and working with him as well. The lease is for 50 years if all the terms are, terms and extensions are exercised.
And it is renewable, how often?
It's automatically renewed every five years. So, we got nine successive five-year terms. Emergency services, the town, I mean, our, our philosophy is, and always has been, if the town needs emergency services on the tower, they will go off the top of the tower. It will be for no charge. And if the tower becomes obsolete, it's our responsibility to remove the tower and take everything away.
Thank you very much.
John D'Angelo, 65, Arbor Crossing. I'm not against the tower. I know we need coverage in that area, it all makes sense. I would like to propose, though, we've done this in the past in East Slime, the tower is, it's kind of ugly, it's in the middle of Central Flanders. Propose maybe coming up with another design. We have a barn that we put, I'm actually an owner of a cell, well, I don't own the cell tower, but leased on our property. Mystic, there's a flagpole. In West Hartford, there's a beautiful clock tower they built. We built the barn. I maybe, like a subcommittee with the town, working with the landowner and coming up some sort of design that would just be more aesthetically pleasing. We're not, and I think, most of us aren't against having a tower, but we'd like to work with you and just come up with a better design. Even just a single monopole would probably be better than the monopole with the two arrays. It's just kind of lazy, the design, it's just a modern design, I get it. But there's just so many other things we could do, I think, that would fit better into the Village Flanders. So, I'd like to consider that.
Thank you.
Lisa DePiero at 152 Upper Paddock Anset Road. I'm on the very north part of the lake and we have terrible service. We are so excited about this, I wish it could have been put in yesterday. We have calls fail, we have calls drop. We had to put a landline phone in through Xfinity in order to talk to anybody. It's just terrible and I welcome this with open arms. And honestly, I don't even know where the tower is behind Daddy's noodle bar. I never really noticed it, because I don't look, I mean, I'm sure, I don't really look up anyway. But when I'm in the car driving by, I'm not looking at it. And if you look at that restaurant and towards the back, there's just a bunch of cars in a field. So, I don't know that, it would be nice to have a green fence if it was green behind it or a blue pole to match the sky or whatever. That's not feasible, it's not gonna happen. It would be green if you're in the middle of the woods, but it can't be perfect. But I like the monopole idea versus the big gritty thing, because that's awful. One monopole kind of looks like a tree. So, anyway, I welcome it with open arms and do the best you can to make it nice. That's all.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Mulholland?
Bill Mulholland, zoning official, just a couple of things for consideration at this particular point. Well, understanding and respecting the Siting Council's position, that some of the testimony this evening was regarding some of the support buildings and structures. Obviously, they're not looking to respect our local zoning and our setbacks and our buffers they are in an aquifer. Our Wetlands Commission has a 300-foot jurisdiction. I don't know if that was considered or even reviewed. I'll leave that to the applicant to discuss. Regarding the restaurant parking, we heard some testimony this evening, they're going to eliminate it. If they eliminate too much, it makes the restaurant non-conforming. It may not be expanded under local zoning. So, that would be, have to stay in its current configuration. We didn't discuss a fall zone. I think that's something that should be discussed. You've got the, the tower at 135 feet. How many structures are within that location or are built in that, in that radius? How many parking spaces, parking lots? Is it a safety hazard? Is it a public safety hazard? Have they addressed that? I think that's something that we, that should be addressed, or just at least put into the record. Regarding other locations, in my opinion, professional and personal, there are other locations that should be considered. I don't think that ground has been covered enough. We've talked about elevations this evening, and, and we have a small valley, and we have some ridges on both sides. You have the apartments up at Gateway, which are extremely high, and there's land in that area. There's land on the Daddy's Noodle site, almost adjacent to where the existing tower is. There's five acres behind a Motel 6 that is vacant. I think it's even on the market, and I'm sure that the property owner might be able to be helpful. We've talked about reception east and west on 95. Maybe there are better locations. I think there should be more consideration of that. Certainly, they've talked about redoing the drainage basin. We, the town, would be very concerned about that, because that's something that we probably, and I can't testify with certainty that we looked at it originally, but that's something we're going to consider. In addition, we have created an architecture review zoning district in that area of the community, as well as in Nyana Village. The rules are essentially the same. I'm not really seeing any consideration. And we do recognize the Siting Council's jurisdiction. We've worked very hard for 40 years to try to clean up that end of our community. We've been successful. And, and placing this particular facility in the middle of this district just doesn't seem appropriate, in my view. I think that should be discussed. I think at this point, that's all I have to offer, but there is certainly a lot of things I think that still need to be vetted. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard at this time? Is there anyone else that wants to be heard? Going three times, anyone else to be heard?
I don't know if the commission would like to hear from me now about the history of two other sites that I was involved in on behalf of the town, one in 2010 and one in 2015, or if you'd rather wait to hear from me at all during your regular meeting when you're deliberating.
I, I personally would like to hear from it now, since we're right into it. There's still people here.
Yeah.
Okay. Just, I think it would be helpful to the board to hear about two other times where the town became involved in applications. The first was in 2010, and Paul Formica was the first selectman. And the site was 49 Brainerd Road. I'm sure that Ms. Hardy has a clear memory of this one. It was very controversial, because for everyone who knows where Brainerd Road is, it's a very rural area of town. It also has water views. It affects all the beach communities in that part of the town. And it, that was, the town moved to intervene in that case. And I can explain what that means. Actually, that means become a party to the action. You go to the Siting Council during the hearing, you, you engage in discovery, you bring witnesses, you have cross-examination. It was a long, drawn-out affair. And what took it to get it to that point was the Board of Selectmen voted to have the town intervene. And in that case, the tower was approved by the Siting Council because of coverage issues in that area. And then the next time was in 2015. AT&amp;T proposed a tower. Mark Nickerson was the first selectman. And that was also, that had a lot of opposition. And eventually, the Mohegan Tribe wrote a letter to the cell tower company, because they were concerned that it was a historical site. They had found, apparently, Indian cairn sites on there. And in that case, AT&amp;T withdrew its application, and the, the orchards agreed to let them put their equipment on top of a tower that was already existing up there. And as far as I know, at least during my tenure with the town for the past 38 years, those are the only two that garnered opposition, a lot of opposition, so much so that the board acted. Yeah, so, so what, okay, so, but nevertheless, it was moved off of ancient highway and, and put onto the orchard's property due to the cooperation of the orchards and the barn or whatever it is you worked out. Yeah.
So would you want to wait until we're in the regular meeting to identify the several options that the Board of Selectmen has? Would that be more appropriate at that time?
It's up to you. It's up to you.
Well, we've already mentioned the intervenor status. Would you want to appraise the board of the other options with respect to our, our role?
Sure.
I do have one question for Mr. Mulholland at one point, so maybe after Attorney Collins finishes?
Yeah.
I prepared a resolution, but basically, your options are: seek intervenor status, which I told you, where we fully participate in the hearing before the Siting Council on the application. Your second option is to enter a limited appearance on behalf of the town. That includes the submission of written comments at any time up to 30 days after the public hearing before the Siting Council on the application, so that the Siting Council will accept written comments from the town. Or someone on behalf of the town can attend the hearing before the Siting Council and make oral comments during the public comment portion. So those are your three options. I suppose your fourth option, which has happened in the town, is to do nothing.
Thank you, Trish.
Sure.
And now you have a question for Mr. Mulholland.
Yeah, sorry. I just want to clarify something, if possible. You said that something to do with the parking. If they eliminate parking, then does that mean the restaurant would have to close?
Locally, yeah. So for clarification purposes, locally, under our zoning regulations, every business has to support itself with onsite parking. So a restaurant's parking is factored out. One parking space for 50 square feet of public floor area for a standard restaurant, where you typically have waitress service. A fast food restaurant would be factored out. One parking space for 25 square feet of public floor area. And obviously, we would ask for additional parking for, for employees and things like that. If you eliminate that, those required parking spaces, then the facility or whatever the business is, becomes non-conforming. Under the rules of non-conformity, typically cross-state in most towns, and particularly here, you can't expand a non-conforming use. It's specifically spelled out in Section 21 of the Eastland zoning regulations.
So if that were to occur when it is non-conforming, what would occur?
They could not expand the restaurant in any way, shape, or form. You could maintain what you have, but you couldn't do any expansions. And typically, over time, what we have found, particularly in Eastland, as our town continues to grow and become more sophisticated, and we're becoming kind of a hub for restaurants, they're going to want to expand. Or, or the next round or the next donor, I would anticipate that happening, because that's been consistent for decades. If they become non-conforming, it may or may not become problematic for the operator and the property owner. In addition, we do not, in our local zoning, count off-site parking spaces. So if there, if we're looking to add additional parking on another site, it would not be in compliance with our zoning code, because each activity is supposed to support itself within the confines of the, of the property.
So I, I guess just to follow up. Let's say they go forward with this, and they maintain, I guess they, they take some of the parking, then would it automatically be non-conforming, and they wouldn't be able to expand, or would they have to be shut down? I'm, I'm trying to understand what's going to happen.
So they don't have to shut down. They could continue to operate, and certainly, let's say, for example, they're required to have 50 parking spaces, and they have 75. So my threshold is 50. So over that, that number, it's irrelevant. It doesn't affect the operation. It doesn't become non-conforming. And certainly, I'm not aware of that until I hear more. But I want to put that out tonight, because of some of the testimony regarding that issue. And better to know early than to know later on.
That's also up to the owner and the property owner.
Well, it's up to the property. That's exactly right. They can decide that and think for them, it's in their best interest, and it doesn't really affect their operation.
Right. I just wanted to put it on record.
No, you're, you're absolutely correct. No, you're absolutely... Yeah, you're, you're absolutely correct. All set?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, are there any other questions from the board, or any other comments that need to be made to the board? If there are none, then I think it would be appropriate to entertain a motion to close this hearing.
I'll move to close the public hearing of November 19th, 2025, regarding these cell tower...
I'll second.
...application for 306 Flanders Road, Eastland Community.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, any extensions? Motion carries. The public hearing is closed. I want to thank everyone that attended. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you to the public for your comments. There were some great questions that were asked.